All right, welcome. It is 5:30 on Tuesday, May 25th, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Ferndale School Board. To begin the evening, will everyone please rise and join me in the side of the table? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item 2.01 is the adoption of the agenda. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or to propose any changes.
Chairman McLeod, I would like ask that you table Agenda Item 7.04, which is the tribute to the community heroes, or it's the Community Heroes Award, giving to the Lummy Nation for their work, for their help with their vaccine programs. But there have been a lot of deaths in the Lummy Nation. Is that a funeral tonight? And so we are going to try to reschedule that.
Okay.
In the minutes for last meeting?
In the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, there were some questions or thoughts that there were some comments that were omitted from the minutes from our last special meeting, and so we're going to review those and make corrections. And so we'll approve those at the June. So those are removed from the consent agenda. All right, so with that, up the motion.
So I would move to adopt the agenda minus 7.04, and knowing that we are going to remove the minutes from the board.
So it has been moved to accept the agenda with the two changes that were mentioned. Item 7.04, as well as removing the minutes from our study session from the board's consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's been moved. All right, now that, we'll move on to public comment. Now that we've begun conducting our meetings in person, we will once again be taking in-person public comment. According to the governor's current emergency rules regarding the Open Public Meetings Act, persons wishing to attend the school board meetings in person and who wish to deliver comments in person are expected to register in advance to provide the district an opportunity to make appropriate distancing arrangements. The emergency rules also require us to continue to accept advanced public comments to us in writing through a portal on our district website. Or we can get them through email or provide an option for stakeholders to request ahead of time to make their comments publicly, virtually via video. So lots of opportunities for public comment. We received one written public comment in advance from Barbara Johnson. Ms. Johnson asked, "Is the FSD going to implement CRT and our IED programs in the schools in the 2021-22 school year? If so, what materials will be used and who is training the staff? I object to both of these programs as they encourage racism and conflict amongst students, staff, and families." As is our typical approach, we don't respond to public comments in the moment. So I will ask Dr. Quinn to follow up with Ms. Johnson.
We'll have to look at what I use.
Yeah. Kelly, did anyone register to deliver a public comment this evening in person? Are on, yeah? Okay. In addition to the time for public comment at our meetings, Dr. Quinn continues to write answers to questions received from the community during the previous month and post these answers in the public comment item on both of our, on both our board docs agenda and also on the website.
So Andrew, did you say email was an appropriate way to turn in public comments?
Yes.
Because we do have an email from Pat Rogli, and she has an opinion on how to use the Esther funds, and so I don't know.
And I wasn't, it didn't come across as a public comment. It was a letter for us to address, certainly, but it wasn't indicated that it was a public comment.
We've already been using, including the ones that are, want to be public comments.
Okay. So if they send an email, they should say that this, I want this included in public comments. Okay.
And there's a small questionnaire that asks them, are they going to do it in person? Do they want us to read it? And so it's very clear to us if they want to do it in person or if they want us.
If they just send it to the school board, unless they say, I want this as public comments at the meeting, it won't be entered as public.
Because they haven't indicated that it's public. So at this time, Item 4.01 is our plan to interview the student representatives of the school board. One of the most important purposes of our meeting tonight is to select a new student school board representative to replace Abhne Pano, who will be graduating from high school in a little over two weeks. The new student we select will join Kong Wen, who will be a senior and a second-year board member next year. We have two candidates, candidates that we'll be interviewing tonight. To prepare for the interview, the board will convene at this time into an executive session for approximately 15 minutes. During the executive session, we will be reviewing the candidates' applications, sharing with one another the questions that we plan to ask during the interviews, and determining the order of the questions. No other actions will be taken while we are in executive session. Following that session, we'll reconvene into our open public meeting and proceed with interviews.
Andrew, I think we can move into the conference room back there for our executive session.
Right, so we'll convene into executive session.
That would be the board members, including Congress, is when you.
All right, well, thank you for staying with us while we were in executive session to plan our interviews with the two students for the open position on the school board. Both of the candidates are currently finishing their sophomore year at Ferndale High School. But at this time, I want to welcome my first candidate and ask her to introduce herself. Then I'll ask the board members to introduce themselves before they ask the question.
Hi, everyone. I'm Madison Buttonstone, and I am a sophomore at Ferndale.
Thank you for being here. So I'm Andrew McLeod, and I'm the board president. So at this time, we're going to have a series of six questions that we can go through doing. If you have any questions, you can ask us as you guys would. All right. So first question, what's me, wasn't it? I was telling on somebody else. And I did the order. So we feel certain that each candidate for the school board position has applied because they want to make a difference. What makes you stand out? What unique strengths and perspectives would you bring to this position?
Um, I think ever since I've been little, I mean, I've always kind of been one of the like outgoing students in this school. And I think I've taken that role and really like put it in perspective and like have really like told myself like, okay, what's really going to make a positive impact on not just my life, but other people's lives? And I've kind of like taken that and like, hmm, I've like kind of just like put myself and like took action for like before others and like, how do I word this? Just try to put others before myself, and I think that's what stands out about me. And then attributes that I have to contribute would be that I'm a pretty dependable student and representative. And I think that a lot of people know that about me. And I think just I'm someone anyone can really go to, and they know they can trust me with whatever they need, and if they have a need that I can like make that need like a priority and make something out of it.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Call. I'm one of the school members represented this year. My question to you is, this past year, my project has been advocating for student voice. What are your thoughts about how we could increase student voice within Ferndale High School?
Um, I mean, student voice is always a struggle within any school you go to, I think. Just because not a lot of kids feel like they have like a lot of comfort to just voice their opinion because they feel they'll be judged by others. And I think, um, I know like we have our Instagram page, I'm sure you know about, that, and I feel like that has a lot of power to it, just like we have those like surveys, we did the panorama one, I think it was last week, that we could express like how we felt about the school year and what's like, what we want to have more comfort and what we need to be more successful. And I think how like, I think that's probably like the best way to get student voice, because students aren't going to be super vulnerable to like speak their own opinion because they're afraid of like backlash and that. So I think like, just like doing it through it, like doing it anonymously, I feel like is the best way to get the best student voice you can have. Um, but to also just encourage others to, just to give us, just to like pump them up, like, you know, so.
Thank you.
Diversity is important, important value to our school boards. How do you personally, how would, how do you personally represent diversity?
Uh, so I think, so I, last quarter, I was in leadership too. And my class, we do class projects each year. And my class, we came up with the idea of highlighting each diversity group throughout our school. And so each month, we dedicate our lounge and decorate it in different like facts and like poster boards about like a certain group. So like this month, it was like mental health. And so it was just kind of based off like just what mental health does to you and like how it can affect us. And then like, that's fun. I'm pretty sure it's the first time in Ferndale High School that we'll be celebrating Pride Month. And so just to like, we just, we felt like the diversity in our school, like it was there, but it wasn't. So we wanted to highlight it and just recognize those different groups and show that they really do care. They care as much and matter as much as we do, so.
Okay. I'm Kevin Erickson, and my question for you is, tell us about someone who has been a role model to you.
Um, I'd say my leadership teacher, Marty Morvik, Mr. Morvik. Um, I'm sure most of you know him or know of him. He's a very positive person and someone that I look at and I'm like, wow, like, that like, because he's told us about his backs, like background about himself and this like struggles he's gone through through our life. And here he is, he's impacting like everyone's life, like anyone that takes leadership will probably tell you that like he's a guy that you always get to. And I feel like for me, like I've only been a student for a year and he has already changed my perspective with things in a way I didn't even know that was possible. Just like with supporting others, even though like even not knowing their background and just trying to like being very empathetic for others and just like making connections you didn't think were possible with other people. just like making connections you didn't think were possible with other people.
Right, I'm next. I'm Leanne Riddle. Um, my question for you is what are your thoughts about how the district can encourage involvement and participation by students and families who haven't always felt completely included by our school community?
Uh, so, question, um, I don't know. I mean, I guess I kind of go back to the whole student voice thing of what Colin asked me is that you try to try to encourage others to like be involved. And it's not always going to be the easiest thing. It's probably the hardest thing that I try to do is like encourage others to try to be involved and it's just not their thing. And I think just try to be as inclusive as you can and think of what they would want and not just what you think they want. Like get their input and go from there and just I don't know, just try to like, because what you think they want might not be what they want. And that's you kind of got to figure out that piece first before you kind of move forward, I feel like.
Madison, I'm Melinda. Melinda Cool. If you are selected to serve on the school board, what do you hope to accomplish?
Um, I hope to accomplish, uh, I'd say that just to impact someone's life, just like Morvik has for me, I think. Just because I have a role in the title just doesn't mean like people like shat on me and stuff. I feel like having a title doesn't really mean a lot, but it just matters about the impact you make in someone's life or anyone's life really. Um, but I just think like doing something for others and knowing that you impacted their life is something that's unmatchable.
So Madison, this is Avneet. Avneet, did you want to ask any question?
Yeah. So an effective student school board member represents and advocates for all of the diverse students who attend the Ferndale School District. Do you have examples of ways you have or ideas about how you might promote the dignity and rights of individuals or groups of students who are not part of the majority?
I mean, again, I guess I go back to trying to comfort like be more vulnerable than people think I could be. Um, and really showing like who I really am, I guess. Because if I'm not vulnerable, why shouldn't anybody else speak to me about their problems? And I guess just try to make them feel like they can trust me in a way that they can come to my, come to me with their problems and know that I can take it to a further step and like make a change. So they feel loved in this school district, so.
So Madison, that's the end of the school board's questions. But now I want to, I wanted to ask you whether there's anything you really want to tell us that we didn't ask or if you have any questions about this position. Tell us about yourself. You want to tell us some?
Oh, uh, sure. Um, I'm a two sport athlete, possibly three sport next year. Um, I play a pretty, I've always played a pretty big role in like the ASB leadership type role throughout each school event and I'm currently the sophomore secretary at the high school and then I'll be the assistant treasurer next year and treasurer my senior year. Um, I'm in leadership one this year and two. And I was in charge this year. I took action in our freshman tours before we went to hybrid because I felt the need, I kind of realized to myself, oh, our freshmen don't know what our school looked like. And that might not go too well on the first day. So I took action and worked with Morvik and I planned out, I scheduled all of our freshmen and made a sign up with Ms. Gillespie at the high school and I took on that and we, it actually was really successful. And I think that was a positive thing that I did throughout the high school so far. Um, that really helped freshmen because my freshman year, I didn't really get a tour of the school. And I wanted, I didn't want that for the incoming freshmen, so I did that for them. And then I also took part in the groundbreaking ceremony and worked a little bit with Dr. Quinn and um, two other fellow classmates, Malia Finkbonner and Xander Castellari. And we worked together to get a different diversity group of kids um, that represent our school very well to hand off shovels and do a few speeches throughout the ceremony, which I thought went amazing, by the way.
So did I. We did really well.
Um, so yeah, that was pretty impactful too. I feel like that I'm, I felt good doing it. Like I felt like I really felt involved in that. So, and yeah.
Okay. So, thank you. Um, the process that we have next, I don't know if our second candidate is here. So we have another candidate to interview in a similar fashion. You're welcome to wait outside. We will contact both of you if you're not here about our decision. After we've interviewed both of you, we will reconvene back into our executive session to discuss answers and next steps.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
And Madison, the decision will be made tonight.
Okay.
And it'll be made in public. You so like Mr., like President McLaurin said, you can stay or we'll call you.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
We're gonna go in the same order and you can ask the last question.
Right under the big spotlight.
Hi, nice to have you here, Jazzy. I'm Andrew McLaurin, I'm the board president. So you know what we're doing. Um, we have a series of seven questions that we'll ask you and ask you to you know, of course, answer. And then you have an opportunity at the end to tell us some other things about yourself if you'd like to.
Okay, sounds good.
We do, we will make a decision tonight. And so when you're finished, you can wait. Are you welcome to leave and we'll call you, whichever you prefer. Okay, so I get to kick it off with the first question. We feel certain that each candidate for this school board position has applied because they want to make a difference. What makes you stand out? And what unique strengths or perspectives would you bring to this position?
I think I stand out because I'm a person of color. My uniqueness is that I'm willing to do whatever it takes. I'm extremely determined to help everyone and that is why I want to go is to help people. And I focus on the part of that question.
Uh, what makes you stand out and what unique strengths or perspectives would you bring to the position?
I think I'm a person of color. I'm a minority, like I'm bringing that point of view for some students in the Ferndale District.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Call. I'm one of the speakers this year. Uh, my question to you is this year, uh, my project has been advocating for student voice. What are your thoughts about how we could increase student voice within our Ferndale High School?
Really reaching out more. And I feel like if we got one on one with students, uh, we would be able to like naturally listen to them and got to know them better. Uh, we would be able to find out like what issues or what they want to be spoken about, like.
My name is Jesse Beardo. And my question is diversity is an important value to our school board. How do you personally represent diversity?
Um, I'm Native American. I'm Aboriginal from Canada. And uh, I believe that being able to, everyone to show their culture and their religion be able to express that safely, uh, is a huge thing and I would love to help people do that.
I'm Kevin Erickson and my question for you tonight, Jazzy, is please tell us about somebody who has been a role model for you.
My older sister. So I grew up uh, homeless. I was in the system for like uh, a while and I, I'm adopted now, so I'm all dead now. But uh, she definitely helped me to take the person I am today. She's a nurse and she's right now doing the COVID patient, so she is super strong and she is definitely my role model. She's always been there for me.
Thank you.
My turn. So my name's Leanne. What are your thoughts about how the district can encourage involvement and participation by students and families who haven't always felt completely included by our school community?
Um, I love that we have a, have clubs. I think we should host more events. Get information out there or like hold, I think, more Zoom meetings that bring out their COVID. Like get like different groups out there and reach out to more people.
My name is Melinda Cool. Nice to meet you. Um, my question is if you are selected to the school board, what do you hope to accomplish?
Uh, I just want everyone to feel equal and have a voice. I want everyone to know that we are here for them. And like this is our duty, like we are helping that. We want to get all voices heard.
Hi, so I'm Avneet, or Avneet, however you pronounce. An effective student school board member represents and advocates for all of the diverse students who attend the Ferndale School District. Do you have examples of ways you have or ideas of how you might promote the dignity and rights of individuals or groups of students who are not part of the majority?
So like minorities and yeah. I think question, the top one. I feel like me reaching out and stuff like, is that what you're asking? Promote the dignity and rights of individuals. Uh, I mean, I attended Black Lives Matter. I advocate for that stuff. I advocate for the LGBTQ. I advocate for minorities, uh, all that stuff. So I try my hardest to be advocating for everyone.
Thank you. That, that's all the questions except now you can, uh, you can either ask us some questions or we would love to have you tell us about your, anything about yourself that we didn't ask you.
Um, actually, I like, I want to know like what you guys plan to do for minorities in the Ferndale District. I want to know what you guys want to like, even help everyone and like even like lower income families, like I want to know what you guys are doing. Help them with the school. And if your goals are, what I mean.
You answer?
I think that's fine.
Um, well, we talk about that all the time. We are working, we are working on what, what we call it our equity agenda. And that's trying to figure out how we can make sure that we remove obstacles from um, kids. That's the main, you know, we want, we want schools to be part of the answer for every kid, not another problem. So removing obstacles, making learning accessible, making sure that um, kids are able to do, to access whatever they want in our school system. There aren't financial barriers or any other kind of barriers, transportation barriers or, and so, um, we have, we have lots of different ways that we're going about that. One of them is that we're trying, where we've got a district equity committee that's looking at everything and trying to find those places where there are obstacles. One of them is that we've been doing professional development to be more culturally responsive, to know more about other cultures. One of them is we're starting a program that's called MTSS, which means multi-tiered systems of support, which is really in the academic world to just make sure that every kid has the support they need to achieve academically. And one of them is we're trying to be a more, get a more diverse workforce, you know, so that every, every student in the system can see people that look like them working in the system. So there, and there's other things too. Anybody want to add anything?
I'd like to add a little on that. It's definitely our administration are the experts on how to get things done. I think as school board members, um, we can help brainstorm or we can ask questions or we can look at, when they give us a report, it'd be like, well, did we ask this question or what about such and such? And the administration is very responsive in answering those questions for us. So the school board, based on like the questions that they ask or the things that they are interested in, that can kind of help to, to guide a little bit on what the, what the administration does. So having people that ask different questions because they have different perspectives is really helpful. I think.
Just speaking about the high school in general. We were starting to create more clubs, one called the Basic Club, which is for South Asian students. And if you are in clubs, there's a lot of clubs for minorities in general. And also in our leadership class, like I've been making posters for missing murdered Indigenous women and we also write announcements for that. So also if you ever have any ideas, you can also talk to the leadership group about it.
So I guess now is also a good time to advertise. So hoping on June 2nd, I have a program that is my project. It's called Thought Change. On June 2nd, it will be holding out to everyone in like the school, um, students. Ways to, to go the culture of high school. So if we would love a lot of diversity to like join in.
Yeah, that's cool. About myself. Right now I'm a vote, so I, I'm saying I'm going to train, find out if I can go walk through school and see all the pictures you're having. Another thing about myself is I believe that no matter who you are or what, what's going on in your life, that you should be able to have the same access to everything someone else, uh, like in school. And uh, like whether or not you're, you have a disability or your sexuality is different or your race, I believe that everyone should have the same access to everything in school.
Thank you. All right. Well, as I said, we're gonna now convene into executive session. If you want to wait, you're welcome to, or we'll call you. But we'll make a decision tonight. And we so appreciate you coming in.
I feel honored to be here.
Thank you.
Really nice to be in all of you.
Thank you, Jazzy.
All right. So we'll lean into executive session for another fifteen minutes. Okay.
Thank you.
You are free to go as well as I would like you to.
Well, I think we will head out and have another educators. Thank you all again very much and it was our pleasure. Hope all of you to be well for the next coming year.
Thank you. But she spent all this time on that note.
Now. It would be detailed.
You can't stop her. All right, well, we'll move on to item 7.03. And this is another good news story, so I'm going to call Dr. Quinn to present this year's Burndale District's.
And I'll just come back here to our business of the year. Daryl Hilaire, Mark Nichols, and Julie. And so now you got to listen to me, I'm going to be so tired of hearing myself. But so I'm very pleased to announce that Children of the Setting Sun Productions has been selected as the Burndale School District 2021 Business of the Year. Each spring, the district honors one business that has made outstanding contributions to Burndale Schools. We are deeply grateful to many local businesses for their support. However, the contributions of Children of the Setting Sun Productions and Executive Director Daryl Hilaire stand out above the rest. The positive impact they have made on our children, our staff, our families, and our community has been exceptional. Children of the Setting Sun Productions is a multimedia film and theater arts production company specializing in Coast Salish storytelling. The name dates back to the 1930s when Mr. Hilaire's great-grandfather formed a song and dance group with the same name. I read your website. He explains, "My great-grandfather decided that people needed to get educated in this area, so he formed a dance group called Children of the Setting Sun, and we've carried it on." Mr. Hilaire goes on to say that his motivation came in part from the realization that there were no production companies focusing on Native American stories. The first story Mr. Hilaire wrote was called "What About Those Promises?" And it was the saga of the Lummi Peoples' land claims with the United States government. The historical story was eventually brought to life in a play which many of us had the opportunity to see when it was performed throughout Watcom County. Our mutual quest to educate first brought the Burndale School District together with Children of the Setting Sun Productions in December of 2019. When we were looking for a way to prepare for the district's first-ever observance of Treaty Day on January 27, 2020. Over winter break that year, several of our administrators, including Heather, met with Daryl Hilaire and Jay Julius. And together, they created a 22, well, they created, they created a 22-minute video that could, we could use as the centerpiece of our lessons about the significance of Treaty Day. The Treaty Day film, which debuted in January 2020 and was updated for 2021, has been incredibly impactful. Not only does it represent a major step forward in achieving a more meaningful implementation of the since-time memorial curriculum for our students, but it's also helped to educate our staff, families, and community. Based on our positive Treaty Day experiences with Children of the Setting Sun Productions, one of our first inclinations was to seek out Mr. Hilaire and his team. And the district's educational programs and operations levy failed in February of 2020. With their mission to create understanding and change perceptions across cultural differences, we hoped they could help us tell the story of the levy in a compelling way. Thankfully, they agreed to work with us on our information campaign. And the series of video vignettes they produced were game changers. The passage of the levy the second time around in November 2020 simply would not have happened without them. I could go on for much longer singing the praises of Children of the Setting Sun Productions. I could talk about the series they began producing during the pandemic called "One From the Heart", to bring conversations on different topics to the Lummi Nation while the stay-at-home order was in effect. I could talk about how honored I was personally to be part of two of their heartfelt programs. One in May of 2020 on education during the pandemic, and another in March of 2020 called Reflections on a Year with COVID. I could talk about the commitment of Mr. Hilaire's production company to elevate and amplify youth voices. The way they have made space for young people on their board, their continuous search for more meaningful avenues for involving younger generations in their work. I could go on for much longer, but let it suffice to say that there are many reasons for celebrating Mr. Hilaire and Children of the Setting Sun Productions. I want to express our deepest gratitude to you and your team, on behalf of the school board, the district staff, the children and the children and youth of Ferndale. This community is blessed to have you in it. And thank you seems too small a word to express our gratitude, so I'm going to borrow from you and say also, hey, Shuka, I raised my hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And. The Masons are. Sorry, is it your broken? So this is, this is for you, and it's a very small token of how much we appreciate Daryl and Mark. Very appreciated. Would you?
I'd love to, I'd love to. And I'll have Mark say it in your orders too, but I'd like to thank each and every one of you for taking the time to bring us in here to recognize one another. And in this world, it's much more gratitude. I'm really thankful that you guys are doing that today and recognizing the work that we did together, actually, you know, it's not just us. Dr. Quinn and Heather and a few others that we forgot to mention COVID-19 and the vaccinations and the like, you know, really proud of being part of that work where our nation exercised their sovereignty. Nobody made them share their vaccinations. It was, it was an act that they took upon themselves to share with other people. They continue to do that. They want to share with our First Nations people in Canada. That's the next extension of, you know, their generosity. And that's really what we're all about, is sharing as much as we know about this place that we live in with all of you and all of those people that are coming into this land to live here to ensure that our values are understood, that we're, most importantly, people of great gratitude, of generosity and respect. I think we should all start in that manner when we get to know one another. And we're really proud of the levy. We high five when the levy passed because, you know, it was really good for our kids to understand they're going to get better, better education, better facilities, a better place to call home, really, you know, because school is your home, you know, for a big part of your life. A big part of Mark's life, I'd like him to share his feelings about that because he went to school here. You know, he really wanted to do this because of this connection to Ferndale, so.
Thanks, Daryl. Feels good. We'll call it off. I really wanted to thank Heather because she is such a talented editor and did a really great job of helping with the treaty thing and making that work, so, yeah, I think you deserve a. And, you know, there's so much passion behind all this stuff, you know, I'm just so thankful to have lived to see the day that that film was shown, you know? I think that's the main thing, I just feel really there's a lot of work to do to, as Daryl says, you know, just hear each other and really hear the songs, you know, and hear them in a way that touches all of our hearts, you know, so that we can keep going together as a community, so. Just thanks everybody for the opportunity to be part of the levy and that was also a tremendous learning experience, and I kept thinking how blown away I was by the the students who were speaking. You know, they're just, I don't know if you guys had that same reaction, but there was a lot of pride when I was listening to them talk about their experiences as young people. And anyway, thanks, everybody.
We have another award we were going to present tonight to Chairman Solomon and Dr. Usagi. It's called our Community Heroes Award for the Vaccination Clinic. Chairman Solomon can't be here tonight because of a funeral, so we'll present that award in June. So we didn't forget that vaccinations needed separated. Yours was the business, theirs was the heroes. Your, your, our heroes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right, on the next item on the agenda is item 7.05, and that's, this is a recognition of employees or retirees. One of our longstanding traditions in the town hall has been to devote a major portion of May's school board to honoring retiring staff members. In the past, all of the honorees came to the board meeting, stood in a, stood one at a time beside a staff member who delivered a tribute in their, about their service and good work, and then allowed us to shake their hand and congratulate them in person. Like nearly everything else, our recognition has had to be different for the past two years. So rather than an in-person program, district staff is putting together a slideshow to honor our colleagues who are leaving. The slideshow will be posted on the district website and shared with the school community in June. So although we can't shake their hands, we do want to acknowledge them tonight by reading their names, so. For members, we all have a list of folks. So. Yes.
Are we saying what their position was?
Yes, read all the way across.
So the first person we'd like to recognize who is reading is Michelle Barmore, who's a parent educator at Skyline.
Patricia. There.
Melorie. Sorry. Data processor from the district office.
And Mike Black, counselor at Vista Middle School.
Nancy Button, teacher from Central Elementary.
Sharon Colander, speech language at the school district.
Renee Drawl, teacher at Cascadia.
Susan Edwards, parent educator at Cascadia.
Edwin Ellison, assistant principal, CTE, Ferndale High School.
Gardener, grants manager in the district office.
Sarah Haggas, a parent educator from Cascadia Elementary.
Virginia Holmes, food service worker, Ferndale High School.
Hattie Madison, a teacher at Ferndale High School.
Ray Martin, a bus driver, a bus driver in transportation.
Jerry Owen, parent educator at Cascadia.
Susan Rhodes, a music administrator at the district in Ferndale High School.
Jennifer Richard, AA1 in Custis.
Tim Richard, a teacher at Ferndale High School.
John Shaw, teacher, Ferndale High School.
Susan Shower, a parent educator at Custis Elementary.
Kathy Yel, AA1 at FJus.
And Linda Watson, AA2 at Ferndale High School. We will be missed. They will be. So thank you to all our retirees. We're grateful for your service, and we wish you all the best as you pursue the next chapters in your lives. I will look forward to seeing the PowerPoint presentation with more of your stories. All right, matters reserved for the board recognitions, item 7.06. We're going to recognize school board student, or sorry, student board member, Avne Panu for her service to the board. So we've had Avne for two years now. And for about a year and a half, we haven't really seen each other. We were laughing because this is the first time we've all been together since February of last year. So on behalf of the board, I mean, I want to tell you, it's truly been a pleasure to serve with you. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Quinn to make some remarks.
One more tribute tonight, including your retirement. Except it's all good stuff, right? So I'm honored to say a few words about Avne, our retiring school board member. Avne Panu is a first-generation immigrant with a unique perspective. She possesses a keen mind, gentle spirit, and a genuine desire to serve. At the end of her sophomore year, Avne made the decision to apply for an open two-year position on the school board, writing in her application that her motivation for doing so was to make a positive impact on our community and to help solve the problems plaguing some young people. Among the half dozen exceptional candidates who sat for interviews that night, Avne won the hearts of the board members with her perceptive insights into the plight of traditionally marginalized students and her quiet conviction that our school district could do more to support them. When asked what her strengths or skills, what strengths or skills she'd bring to the position on the school board, she promised to offer kindness, generosity, passion, motivation, and hard work, and she's kept her promise. Avne's leadership has extended beyond her role on the school board. During her junior year, she worked with one of the high school assistant principals to plan our district's first-ever DESI party aimed at bringing together and celebrating the members of our school community whose roots are in India, Pakistan, Bangladesh, Nepal, Sri Lanka, Fiji, Afghanistan, and Bhutan. All 150-plus Ferndale School District South Asian families were invited, along with members of the district administrative team and the school board, to an event that was going to have, would have included a catered Indian dinner, a few words from Watcom County Executive Sat Hall, some special entertainment, and I say would have instead of did include, since the governor's announcement to close all in-person learning and activities in Washington schools due to the pandemic, came on the very same day as the DESI event was scheduled to occur. As a junior, Avne also threw in her support of a group of students intent on raising awareness about mental health issues, an initiative that began with an all-school assembly and resulted in the formation of the MESS Club, which stands for Mental Emergency Support Services. The mission of the club is to educate students about mental health issues and make resources for addressing them more accessible. Beyond the school district, Avne studies Sikhism to deepen her faith and volunteers in various ways in her gurdwara, the place for Sikhs come together for congressional worship. She is truly a dedicated learner, but more importantly, she has demonstrated the power of training education into positive actions in her community. As all this suggests, Avne is a positive and hopeful reflection on her generation. On behalf of the whole board, I want to thank her for her service and wish her all the best as she moves into the next year.
That dinner gets rescheduled. Let us know.
Yeah, I know, I'm going to Watcom, so we will be doing it next.
So we did wish you well, but we'll look forward to hearing stories about your next steps. Our other student school board member, Kong Nguyen, is currently a junior and will continue to serve in his role on the board as a senior during the 21. Moving on to item 7.07. This is time for us to discuss and approve possibly the district's academic and wellbeing recovery plan, which is required by OSTI, and which has been shared with us in advance and also posted on board docs. So at this time, we have a chance to ask questions about the plan before we act on improving it. To answer our questions, I'm going to turn the floor over to our two executive directors of teaching. Dr. Larr and Dr. Babe Britt.
Thank you. As you have seen, you had the opportunity to review and look at the plan. We provided an outline a few weeks ago, just kind of what would be in the plan, looking at our universal diagnostic assessments that we have adopted this year and will continue next year, looking at our, the sorts that we provide and will provide to our students as we look at supporting them in both academic and wellbeing recovery, but also accelerating them into kind of catching them up and then getting them accelerated in their learning. Looking at the strategic supports that we're putting in place, a lot of those supported with ESSA funds, which is the elementary secondary schools emergency relief dollars. And then how we will monitor our students' progress about the use of those diagnostic assessments. So we are completely open to questions and answering any questions that you have or explaining anything from the plan in more detail.
I had sent you an email with a few questions, and thank you very much for your answers to them. Some of them were just kind of like, what's this, Monday? But the one thing I wanted you to maybe explain a little bit more for the public record is what the school-wide information system is and how student privacy is maintained.
Yes, absolutely. Great question, Melinda. SWISS, the school-wide information system, is a it's a system that we've used at the elementary level for many years. It is a place where we record student office discipline referrals, and it goes into a system, and that system then allows us to really dig deep into the patterns of behaviors that we're seeing in our students, both individually, small groups, and then holistically throughout our school system. It is an internal system, so the only people that have access to that data are people that we give, so counselors, our school psychologists, our administrators. And then you can, what I particularly appreciate about it is not only do you collect information about the actual behavior, where it happened, when it happened, but it also looks at perceived motivation for the behavior. And that piece right there is one of the things that allows us to develop those interventions that are specific and targeted to support our students in changing behaviors, because when we can understand some of the motivation behind it, and then the behavior that's coming out of that motivation, then we can put those interventions in place to potentially like if a student is seeking attention, what interventions can we put in place to provide that attention ahead of time so that he gets what they need without necessarily then getting it in a way that's more, not as positive. So that's one example of a way that we would use it and develop those interventions either for individual kids, for groups of kids, and sometimes you can look at the whole store. It is so powerful and the information that it gives us that we're going to use in the secondary level next year, again, sort of drill in and provide interventions to help change some of those behaviors and meet kids' needs, because behavior really is a function of a need, they need something, they're not getting something. So if we can take it from that perspective, it looks at changing behavior and supporting behavior versus punishing behavior.
So the perceived motivation, who is deciding what the perceived motivation is?
The person that witnesses it, so, and sometimes you can't tell, but a lot of the time, like, they're trying to get attention or you know, there's something else going on that you may have seen as a precursor.
That's a beautiful program, is really being able to look at that over a period of time and help you identify, you know, what that is. Absolutely, and the SWISS program is also very much aligned with our PBIS process, so our Positive Behavior Interventional Supports. So most of our schools have PBIS teams, and we'll usually have what's called a tier-one team, which is when we talk about the MTSS. So when we have that core, that universal, we typically have that tier-one team that comes together and looks at the building data, like the SWISS data, so we would have a team that would come together and look at that data. But once again, that would be typically, we have parents on that committee, and we are looking at building overall data. We're looking at, okay, time of day, when are certain behaviors occurring? So when I was a principal, we noticed that the kiddos were transitioning in from outdoor recess, but we could pinpoint. Like, we could pinpoint the time, we could pinpoint the location in the building in which these behaviors were happening. So then we could start modifying some of our building responses based on that. So what we started doing was having our adults go out and greet the kiddos from recess and bring them in. So it allows us to be very, very targeted, but then we also typically have a tier-two team that they identified some very specific people that have some very intentional roles. And we can start to talk about specific students and those behaviors. What's going on and maybe what are some more specific interventions that we can identify and start to find some other activities and source parts that can help them be more successful. So it's very much aligned to our PBIS program. And that security, that safety is very, very on the people that need that information. But like when we're talking about universal, then we can talk about building data, but then as we go up through those tiers, those levels, that's very much more secure with who has that information. And typically, parents are involved in the planning and development of those plans. Of the students, the parents of those students, not parents in general.
Just thinking. And I may have missed this, but is this a template of something that may be continued? You kind of alluded to that, Faye, but is this something that we see continuing on after this first year? Or is that going to be dependent on how it's received and perceived by the state? Or is this a template that's?
Are you talking about the?
Is it something that could eventually roll on? It doesn't strike me that one year is going to be one and done, that it's going to be longer-term effects that?
Yeah, and as if you remember, we submitted one in August to reopen. And then this is kind of like, I could see it taking it to the next level. This is the first of three phases. And as we know, things change constantly, so I would not be surprised to see it extending beyond phase three. Phase two is kind of a review, media check-in, looking at what's working, what's not, looking at what we need to adjust. And that's November. And then phase three is in April when we're looking at, okay, what is a continuous improvement beyond this year? But I, I would not be surprised to see phase four.
Certainly a lot of work.
Well, and I would say that from Kelly and I, a lot of what's in here, we're doing. So it was nice to pull it all together because it wasn't anything that we're like, oh my gosh, we're not doing this. This is kind of our work and what we're investing in with our staffs and practice.
I would say that we have great teams that are supporting this work. It's a pretty high-functioning teams at all levels that are helping conform these efforts. So that's been really nice to have that collaboration as we're building this.
Other questions? All right. Well, thank you for your continued work to get our students back in school. Preparations are in place for the fall. So at this time, I'll ask my fellow board members if we have any further questions. If not, then I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve the academic and student wellbeing recovery plan as attached to your minutes.
All right, it has been moved that we attached the, I mean, that we approved the Burndale District's academic and wellbeing recovery plan as attached here to a made-up part of the minutes. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, it's been moved and approved that we accept this plan, so thank you. The next item on the agenda, 7.08, has to do with a proposal, a proposed rather easement agreement between the school district and the city of Burndale. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Dibok to explain the resolution that we've been asked to approve.
Thank you. It's a bit of an unusual, it's not unusual in terms of the easement process and we have several times previously had granted temporary easements to the city for roadwork or utility construction, that sort of thing. This particular situation, the district actually, back in 1983, asked the city to vacate Golden Eagle Drive that runs through the middle of the high school campus. And at that time, the city actually drafted an easement pass ordinance, 701, that basically vacated that street and allowed it to become part of the high school campus with the caveat that they maintained access to provide emergency services to the campus as well as utilities, right? There's a huge water main that runs through there, there's sewer lines, there's a lot of utilities that run through that underneath that road. The easement was never recorded. So we've been operating as though we're in place since 1983, but it actually was never officially recorded with the county. So in order to go through the state match process and kind of as you, you know, go through a rebuttal or a major construction project, you tend to find things that need to be cleaned up a little bit, and this is one of those particular items. So it's a fairly routine easement to provide access for the city to access the utilities that we thought up until a few months ago was in place since 1983. So we just need now formalize it.
All right, any questions for Mark?
Does it, will this have any impact on, I mean, are we acting as if it is this already, so?
No, it has absolutely no impact on our lives at all.
So it was approved and everything, it's just nobody walked it down?
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Mark's going to personally walk this one.
Yeah, a sound engineer survey. Survey.
Okay. Well, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number five, 2021, easement agreement with the city of Burndale as attached here to a made-up part of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number five dash 2021 easement agreement with the city of Burndale.
All right, it's been moved to approve resolution number five, 2021. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Carry it on now. The next item on our agenda, eight point oh one, is receiving our next policy monitoring report. So at this time, I will call on Linda to tell us about the report.
What I'm going to tell you about the report is it's not all that we've done. I, I just need a little more time. Faye and I need a little time. And so we didn't get posted by tonight's board meeting, but we will get it to you by the end of the week. Sorry. So, but you have the month to review it, and this one's on career readiness. We're going to have time today to do any reviews for six hours. And we will get it to you.
That's why, like I said, we will have a month to review it and get it by the end of the week. After a morning, we'll still have time to review it. So will Kelly deliver our copies?
Yeah, we'll get you a hard copy.
Okay. That's great. So the next item, eight point oh two, is a review and discussion of the monitoring report Superintendent Quinn gave us at our April meeting. This one focuses on results, policy two point seven, health and physical education. So at this time, I'll open up the floor to a discussion of that report.
Thank you very much for this. Lots of work in it, and again, another thing where it seems like COVID just kind of, well, all the plan's going to go out the window. You can't really have to eat classes when it's remote. I did have a question on, in section number two, and talking about the health, the health textbooks that we have, being older than every child in the school district, which we recognize needs to change, but there was something about that the teachers no longer find the books relevant. And so instead, they use a variety of current open-source materials to teach the health standards. And I was wondering, do they work as a team to choose those materials or how do we know this is consistent?
Yes, they do. The team at the high school, the actually teams at the high school and the teams at the middle school level all have developed their curriculum on Canvas, so the courses are consistent between them. Absolutely, they work at that as a team to make sure that the resources they have are aligned with the standards and maybe appropriate.
It's not a very big team.
No, no, it's not.
Most of the health classes at the high school are taught by Peter Pinstun.
And it's maybe two teachers at the high school and.
But and then one teacher each, but yes, they're in close contact.
Yeah, I just figured with like the two middle schools and just if there's a consistency, everybody knows. And then a second comment on the moving the health class from junior year to freshman year. I had one child who took it junior year and then I had another child who I think was in the first cohort to take it in ninth grade. Great improvement. Excellent, 100%, because by the time he got to be a junior, he was kind of like, I either know this or I think that it's worthless or whatever. He didn't pay attention as much.
Too late.
The other one seemed to learn some things, so it's good.
Going back to the curriculum or the textbooks, does it, you know, talked about the 2001 textbooks being outdated or outdated? Does it make sense to stay with open source material and online? I mean, I have to laugh when I, you know, when I show my age at work because when I get something I don't know the answer to, I go get a book. The rest of the people go online to the various look and wars and what have you, knowing, is it worth putting money?
Probably does. It makes sense to do that. We were, this whole process of your policy reports has caused us to really get much more serious about our curriculum adoption cycle and that review. And so we've had, Kelly and Faye and I have had many good conversations on how we're going to how we're going to get this work under the hood. And, you know, it means that once every two years, we're looking at every discipline. And you know that never, those of you who have been on the board, when did we last talk about health and PE, maybe a recess question at some point? And so it puts, makes that standard cycle of every two years, we're looking at everything. And then we're making sure that our curriculum adoption cycle is on a 10-year cycle, but that we're looking and adjusting and making sure that it's not in somebody's notebook. And but there are some of those curriculum areas that it does not make sense to buy textbooks. Temporary world problem. A 21-year-old book, no. And so, yes, it is, I'm really, really happy where we're getting to as far as just that refresh cycle and that constant. And it's because of this, because of these reports.
I'm curious with like between, because textbooks, I mean, how mental health is talked about or was talked about five years ago to now and then five years from now, it's probably going to be huge differences. But then on the open source thing, it's, how do we? I mean, I'm sure the teachers aren't going, oh, I saw this neat website the other day and I'll just, you know. So how do we know that things are vetted, that they're scientifically?
And that's, that's part of this process that we've been talking about, about how, you know, Faye now has made one district secondary administrator sort of in charge of each district. So when they meet together, but we, we have standards. And it, you know, a lot of the conferences that I went to, say, five years ago and so talked about the wild, wild west of the internet. And, you know, I can find a lesson here and a lesson there, but, you know, that's the great part, but it's also, okay, it's time now to.
There's a lot of information on.
Yeah, it's time now to make sure that we're, we are standardizing. And it's really a viable curriculum that all kids get. And so that's part of what teachers do in their PLS work and what, you know, so isn't this anything goes? But it's, but it is choosing more relevant kinds of materials and updating on a much more frequent basis.
If I could just add one more piece to that, part of our adoption process that we're required to use, there are some different processes that we would go through. For instance, if we were adopting like in science, an open educational resource as our core curriculum, even if it's completely online, there are still a few steps that we would need to go through in order to adopt that. If you're using digital resources as supplementary types of resources to your instruction, there are some approval pieces that you're required to go through, like talking to your administrator, reviewing those resources. So there still are steps in place to ensure kind of balances of all the resources that we have. We're trying to tighten that process up a little bit. Through this process as we can become more and more familiar with, you know, those expectations, but there are things in place.
Are there vendors that like have that textbook online that's more malleable, that like changes and such? Is it?
Oh, yeah.
Or is?
You know, a perfect example, I don't think we're using Studies Weekly, or are you using Studies Weekly?
We've used it this year, we will not continue with a portion next year.
But it's a company that I became familiar with where instead of doing social studies in a textbook, that even, even history and social studies in a textbook, it comes more weekly reader fashion on paper that are more of a disposable. And I may have told, I may have told Kevin and Andrew and Leanne the story, but I met this company at a conference somewhere else and they were showing their wares. And I loved the concept, but one of the things they were showing was a video, you know, they're out of Utah, video for young kids about how settlers came to this country and there was all kinds of land free for the taking. And I went up to them and said, that is not going to sell where I live. I mean, that is not an accurate portrayal. And, and one of their claims to fame was that they had 1,600 primary source materials in a bank. So anyway, because they had this very flexible kind of thing, they redid their curriculum. They came up and went out to Lummy and visited with Bernie. They put an interview with Bernie and some other people in their sources. And so I think there are more and more curriculum companies that are realizing that they have to be able to be agile and adjust. So, yeah, it, yeah, we went through a period, I would say, for really the last decade that was kind of Wild West.
You kind of think, I bet in our current textbook, there's probably not too much on pandemics. 1918.
No. A constant process, but which is the reason that this cycle is good. And you guys have to make sure, I think, that you keep doing it because it, we don't, we don't love, you know, every, we don't, we actually do, but you know, it's one more thing to do every month. But it has totally changed the way we're approaching keeping our curriculum refreshed and our, and keeping ourselves educated about what's going on.
Well, it's one sort of way, I mean, since the health teaching team is a small team, it's hard for that team to necessarily say, hey, we need new textbooks. But if we look at it every couple of years and it's like, oh.
Yeah, the next step in this evolution is for those teams to take over a lot of the production of these reports. This is a five-year, you know, to get it, but.
Well, and I think another thing that I appreciated in this report that that alludes to is needing to have that continuity that the goals, that the the things we're trying to achieve with it supersede the person in the position. You know, so that if somebody leaves or there's a transition, that is a goal that's recognized within that department, within the district, within, you know, whatever, you know, so that it keeps going on because, you know, board members are going to change, superintendents are going to change, directors are going to, you know, administrators are going to change. We need that process to keep going and we need to keep going through it, so it needs to be integrated into the.
That's why I've been so determined to get the first cycle written so that, you know, they can, it can be codified and it works.
It continues to be, bring up good review, good topics, good, oh, man, you know.
So I found that the concerns that I had as I was reading.
So I found that the concerns that I had as I was reading it, you really addressed them in the goals. And I appreciated that when you talked about student boys updating curriculum, assessing, addressing barriers. Those were all things that like were popping up and then they were in the goals going forward. My one question, now I guess I have a couple of them, is it doesn't really show us who's participating. You got numbers, but you can't tell which kids are and you know, the same kid is doing volleyball who also is wrestling, who's all and those numbers are pretty small. Um, so I, it would be interesting to know who's participating. And I think when you talk about that assessing and addressing barriers, that plays into that whole piece. Um, the other thing I thought would be more helpful for me as a school board member, because I don't know how many students were talking about that this school was being full chrome. So if it could be done as a percentage, not just a count. So when you say, you know, ten boys did boys swimming, you know, what's the percent of the possible kids that could be doing boys swimming? So for me, that would be helpful.
Well, I think like you said, what are the unique numbers? Because even like Madison tonight, you know, she was in two sports, potentially going to be three. Well, that three count is a lot different than three separate students.
Maybe having another table that's, um, how many students do three sports? How many students do two or percentage do two sports? How many do one and how many do none? Because that does, these tables don't take into account the students that do none.
And that goes back to the participation. Yeah, there was a whole bunch of detail in here and I guess I hope if you're gathering it, you're gathering it because it's useful to you guys. And it helps you tell the story and understand the story. I think it was more detail necessarily than I needed as a school board member. Um, and I don't want you guys to do more work than you think is absolutely necessary.
It sure seemed like weight training was very popular.
And I think that this year particularly because the options were so limited. Um, and even knowing if we were going to come back in person, that the options of activities that we could do might be limited. So I think that was potentially why the data looks more skewed for this year. Because they condensed, kind of like we did with everything, we're like, okay, what's essential? What can we, what can we really focus on here that we can do it well? So that might be why it's a little more skewed this year, because we did not offer racket sports, we didn't offer some of our other more traditional classes. But it is definitely a very popular class.
Yeah, it just looked like, because it had the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty and anything that had weight, like weight training itself, there's a lot of kids. And then weight training with fitness is a lot, weight training and running a little bit less, sorry Fay. But anything with weight training was very, very popular. So it's like, okay, what is making that popular? And is there a way we can create another sort of class to get diversity in what they're doing? Um, that is maybe structured the same sort of way, but isn't picking up heavy things and putting the mat down, but something else for their health fitness. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And out of this, actually I had a suggestion that we offer like a real beginner weight training class, so kids that would like, don't necessarily want to lift big, but just want to, you know, understand it. Um, so we we got some really good feedback out of this from our, from our teams too, so.
I think in in um, like a P E class, it's important for movement, you have to get the kids moving. But it's also an education class. So this may be the only class they're ever going to take about weight training. So I hope at the end of it, they know where their delta weight is and what it is. And how to exercise it, or what are the hamstrings and what are they used for? So because then if later in their life, they want to come up with some exercise plan for themselves and they're like, I don't like this, what do you have, I'm really weak here, what do I do for that? So you know what sort of exercises, exercise that. I think the education of it is.
Thank you all for the report. It was a great deal of information. Um, and thank you board members for your comments. Uh, I will record these on a cover sheet to accompany this R two point seven report. If you've made written comments, Kelly will pick them up, um, when she comes by to get your signatures. Is she going to get her signature, it's like? Well, no, I bet she's still going to come around. She just likes to come and visit us.
Not gonna have a hard coffee, you might get it in the mouth.
I was trying.
Be nice to, be nice to Kelly. Well, it probably won't be her last, but we're getting close. So hired a replacement who will, is going to start middle of June, but you might have to come with.
In any case, if you have written comments and get them to me, I'll incorporate them on the cover sheet. And then that will be ready by our June meeting, so you can approve it in the consent agenda. Um, just like tonight, we have the reports uh, on two point four and then the one that was missing last month is there. All right, the next item is nine point oh one. This has to do with soliciting donations and community sponsors, sponsorships for the New Frondo High School project, and it's a topic that has been initiated by the bond oversight committee and one that we have discussed for several months, if not a year. At our April meeting, the board received a report from the bond oversight committee co-chair Anya Milton. And Anya, thank you for sitting through.
You're very welcome.
We've previously met with a small group of people to explore this topic in more depth. So tonight, we've invited Anya to join us so we can talk about her report and the recommendation set contains. And so Anya, I'll open it up for general discussion. If you have anything you'd like to say.
I just want to say thank you for entertaining the opportunity to look at this heartily. I think that there is, um, with my background in resource development and what I do professionally with the Chamber of Commerce, I think that there's a lot of opportunity for our businesses and then individuals in the community to support the district in a monetary way. And I think that it's a really hard thing for folks who work for nonprofits and the support district is a nonprofit to think that we need to ask for more money when you ask for bonds and levies and so on and so forth. And yet the work needs to be done and yet we are always underfunded. So if there is an opportunity for someone else to carry the torch and not each one of you around the table, it should be like that. So thank you for doing that.
Questions, I know that in the past, we've sort of battered around the confusion of what is it we could or should ask our community to to participate in. And so I think that might be a, at least a topic for discussion tonight. It's still kind of gray in my mind. It's just how much and how many things could we ask for and what, how does that offset other expenses?
So I I just would like to point out first and foremost that there are many institutions, um, both collegiate and um, secondary level that have foundations that raise funds for specific, um, you know, capital campaigns or special fundraising efforts, so on and so forth. And it's not unheard of. I think it's possibly unheard of in this area of Watcom County or in this area of the state. So I think that it it is um, definitely beneficial to entertain the idea of what is possible and not get tied to the, to the details, like what can we ask for? I think we need to think in a larger capacity and also think outside of this, the conversation originally stemmed from the bond oversight committee saying, how can we offset the cost of possibly turf fields? Let someone sponsor that. And then we started talking about larger and larger things. What about the equipment for the new C T E building? What about, you know, new technology? What about, there's all these what abouts? And then we had, I had a couple of offline conversations with folks that talked about how do we fund um, A P test exams for kids that can't afford that? So these are questions that, you know, we we know that there's a need, um, not only for our facilities and for our the each individual school, but what about the students as well? So these are, it's a very broad, broad topic and there are people that do this professionally. I did it on a very small scale at Boys and Girls Club. But this is something that I think that could really benefit our community in tremendous ways. So this was the draft plan that um, I put together to sort of paint a picture of what something could look like. And that's where we really started. So this is super like spitballing of what a plan could look like for Frondeal. And then, of course, if that's something that is of interest to the board to develop that, those conversations further with actual, you know, experts in the field that do this and raise millions of dollars. And I think that that would be a great next step for you to entertain.
Yeah, at least in my mind, I see it as sort of a tiered approach. And if we have an opportunity with the building of the new high school or some possibly bigger ticket items, that would be kind of get a sponsor, be able to buy that, have the acknowledgement, then you kind of move on and then possibly a foundation to do the ongoing fundraising to say pay for A P exams or support sports in a different way, that sort of thing. And that's just my, my thought on it. I see it as two different means.
Right, and absolutely. I mean, most resource development looks at not only corporate sponsorships, but individual giving as well. And then you also talk about people that, you know, want to equate their, you know, their estates as well. That's, those are things to think about. And know that, I'm sure there's someone that loves Frondeal that much, that the district that much, that would like to leave their modest, you know, fortune to the district.
I I thought about that and then I realized the school district would have to pay into it, but it'd be written, so I'm not. So, um, questions, our thoughts on this? This is something we've batted around for several meetings.
I love it. I think the, um, actually, it kind of took me a while to come around to it though, it did. Because when I first was thinking of like company sponsorships for the high school, all I could see in my head was some big banner of a corporation that a kid is going to have to sit in their class and look at all day. And I was like, no, it's not, we're not an advertising site for kids, um, because we all know advertisers want to get kids. They want to pick up those high schoolers or whatever. However, more coming around to it, it's like, I hope we can say that that big banner of whatever corporate logo on the classroom wall is not appropriate. So that's good. But I also really, really like, I don't know, it's about halfway through, a little past half, of being like a monthly donor. Just give your ten dollar a month, whatever goes to it. And I like that thought of being a membership in the foundation for the school district, that it's, Leanne, you've said, as far as for school taxes, your taxes are one of, school taxes are part of the taxes that are, you feel good about giving. And I think this also gives a, another opportunity. If you feel really good about it, you can give more. Oh, I like it.
And there are also, I just want to tag on to that too, is that there are a fair amount of alumni that moves back, like maybe they go to school somewhere else and then come back and their kids are going to go through here too, and they want to know that, you know, they want to have investment in what their children are going to experience. And I think that, given the opportunity of having a new high school facility, is going to be a huge draw for people. Where when you talk about, you know, soliciting sponsorship, given our facility right now, it seems very transactional. Soliciting sponsorship should be transformational when we have a new high school. And it will be, because people are going to be excited to be able to put their dollars into something that is going to excel and and, you know, really shoot its forward into, you know, their careers. So I think that that's, you know, we need to think about it in a little bit different way, and I know that it's hard to do that because of how challenging it has been to motivate this community, especially in the last several years. But I think we do have a massive opportunity here. We do have a massive opportunity here for um, all the wonderful things that have taken place and what will come. I know it sounds like I'm trying to sell it, but I I I don't want you to be afraid of asking questions or like, no, this is never going to happen or you know, I think I I just really want to, if there's one thing I impart tonight is dare to dream. Because I really do think that there is a lot that can be gained from a foundation.
I have a question as far as staffing. Would the, would we expect from the beginning that it would be able to pay for the staffing? The foundation funds would pay for the staffing or would the school, I mean, I don't even know if the school district can.
Right, I mean.
Somebody for this.
Those are all great questions.
I don't know either.
I don't know the answer to that.
Don't either.
Well, I guess the the question that comes to my mind is, how do you go, you know, this is all blue sky in my mind right now and and that's great. I mean, I, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but it's hard to put how do we get from blue sky to reality? I mean, that's, that's the part I'm having trouble going, how to, and 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 also just some of the conversations we've had as far as, okay, well, this, this group wants to pay X number of dollars to have their name and it be the named the stadium. Now, this group of people doesn't like that group, and this people thinks that group's great and raw, raw. How do you find the balance? How do you determine, yes, we will accept that donation, no, we won't? You know, and I, I know that gets into the weeds and the details, that's not, you know, we're still in the blue sky and getting it down. But those are things that, how do we go from blue sky to to getting to that?
I really think the next steps are to act, to speak with the experts that are running successful research development programs to hear what they do. What are the different aspects of their organizations in terms of fundraising, like individual donors? Um, there's also, you know, there's trend, like I said, transactional giving. I mean, there's, we talked about transactional giving just a moment ago, but there is literally like, I want some proof of this. I want a banner up for that. And then there's um, sponsorship in the sense that it is not transactional, it's transformational, where it's just a donation and there is no expectation. And so there's a lot of those different types of um, approaches to what their programs look like. So I think that, you know, tonight we're up here and what you were asking about down here, we need to get in the middle and that's hearing from the experts in the field of what works and find an organization similar to in size and possibly um, socioeconomic background of their community to kind of get a better idea of what that might look like and what programs might look like. And they may have really good suggestions of, you know, I think this might really work well here, because you have so much industry and manufacturing. Or, you know, like, maybe you really need to focus on the individual donors. And, you know, it's, those are the types of things that conversations need to have. And it's probably not necessarily suited for a board meeting, but more of like a task force to assess that and understand with a smaller group of people to present to the board.
Well, and I think within that blue sky of things, you know, often the first place it goes is to that monetary contribution. I mean, when you look at businesses and if you partner with them for internships, work experience, some tangibles. For students who maybe are not going to college, but are going more technical, you know, I think we have to, you know, the bigger the blue sky, the better.
And I think that what is also of value is having a designated individual to have line of sight for all of that, but then also being embedded in the community and really getting to know the different businesses and the, you know, the uh, folks who have the capacity to give at a higher level and engage them. And one of the best lessons I learned from working for Boys and Girls Club and being involved in the chamber was the importance of being involved in the chamber was so that I built relationships with people who have the capacity to give. And when they understand that you live the mission, they are more than happy to support you. And so when you have someone embedded in the community, that there, it's, you know, or it's, it's, it's just priceless. So I think that there are people in the community that would work well in that position. I think it needs to be vetted a little bit more to have a fuller understanding for the board.
So you were talking about having someone sort of help us assess our community to a certain extent. Is that like a consultant? Said there are people who do this.
Well, I mean, we've talked to someone from Western Washington City. You know, there are other types of institutions that, you know, we could just
Be there, yeah, okay.
And ask, hey, would you
I'm not necessarily someone we have to hire.
No, it's a conversation.
Well, and probably as part of that, is that a, something that falls under the board doable, the district, you know, does have to be separate?
Yeah.
What are the legal ramifications?
The admin, can you help us with the, what we can do? And how far we can go. And the other thing is just really developing this who in Ferndale, which businesses in Ferndale, or people in Ferndale for that matter, potentially should be approached about something like this. I, I mean, I know the top five places, you know, business, but I know there are lots of businesses in Ferndale that would probably be interested. I don't know which ones those are, or which ones would not be. I don't know if that's a matter of
Well, and you wouldn't
knocking on the doors.
Right, and you wouldn't because you're not the professional in that role, right? Like, the idea is to find someone who can do that, um,
Yeah.
relationship building, and when you do the relationship building, you're actually assessing, you know, what is the capacity for this company to give? Is there an interest? And so it's a con, it's a constant, um, it's a constant conversation that takes place.
I think when you get to the individual donors as well, like not the businesses, but just, you know, somebody who wants to be a member of the pack. I think that can be invaluable for just community pride
Yep.
and pride in our school district, which, you know, at a later date, you know, every four years or so, when they've got to check a box. Also can help if people feel more pride in, and connection to the district.
Well, forming a connection.
Yeah. Forming a connection and a lasting connection that, you know, potentially can last for generations.
Well, and finding out what existing connections are already there. Business owner who was a member of the state winning volleyball team, or whatever, is, is going to be more invested in all of them potentially then.
So it, it also strikes me that, again, as we're getting ready to build a high school, I mean, you know, they're, we're ready to, they haven't already broken ground like for footings. I mean, we're building a new high school. I know we shovel, but we turn the shovels, but but developing a list of those specific things that we might ask for seems like to me would be something important to know. And maybe that's a part before the course, but it, it seems like we would have to know at least what we're hoping to get sponsored before we talk to people as opposed to, yeah, just give us some money, you know, that sort of thing. It's like, we have these things at this level that we would love to have a corporate sponsor or a person, whatever it might be. And I'm not sure what all those are. We talked about turf, we talked about scoreboards. But is, do we need a, a really definitive list? I know there are suggestions. Is, is that, is that a, a list of things, is that a complete list that we're talking about, or do we need to develop our complete list as best we can?
Yes, and there is no, at this point in the game, because the building of the high school is imminent. There is not a linear approach to this in the sense that, you know, that there's no cart before the horse kind of situation. It's kind of like, you need to have that list of items for sure and vetted in terms of what exactly we're looking at. I'm sure Jamie can get into his top three versions of the type of turf he wants on the field, as an example. And to be able to figure out, you know, maybe the top five items for this, for the new high school. So then you have something that you can pull from, and you may find a donor, a, a, a business perhaps that says, I like all of these, but what about this? And it's some random thing that you didn't think of, and I need to go back and talk to them about that. So this is a very fluid process. And as you're working specifically for those items, you're starting to gain knowledge and understanding of what the larger picture can be for sustainability for a foundation. And so like, that's part of it. And I think that, you know, as you're soliciting, is if you solicit funds or sponsorship for specific items for the high school, I would suggest having a board member be present in some of those conversations so that you're aware of what's going on, and that you can speak, you're the subject matter expert in the conversation.
Well, I was wondering, like, what the bond oversight committee means. Is, could that be a spot where we
Totally.
start developing that list? I mean, I happen to attend those, but any, any other person and it just strikes me that we're at a point where we've got to start putting this list together so that we can really think about where we're going with our requests. And I'm thinking, like the turf, it just personally, well, that means anyone who's been playing football for Ferndale has to get new cleats. And that could be an obstacle for some kids.
Exactly.
They can't play with their old cleats.
Exactly.
They've got to have new cleats. And it's an, an issue that kind of spirals on.
Maybe that's where some of the, like, monthly donations people.
Yeah.
If you had fifty people in Ferndale that all gave fifty dollars a month, how many cleats would that?
Would that buy?
I mean, in many ways, if you think about what the boosters does, this is like the boosters on steroids and someone who's actually paid for their work.
Yeah.
That's all volunteerism. And, you know, the boosters can't carry the weight of what needs to happen.
Energy of a new building, you know, helps to, to jumpstart that.
Yeah.
I mean, I remember several years ago in Linden, they were putting in a whole new playground, you know, monstrosity at one of the parks. You know, they had, they sent around to the various businesses, a you want to sponsor the monkey bars, or you want to sponsor this bridge, or this, you know, they had all these things and all the different.
Or my kid's name. See? I mean, those are accessible, right? Like, because you see it and you're like, oh, fifty bucks, absolutely. I would totally put my kids' names on that.
I think of, our family's been a member of the Pickford for five years or whatever, and we don't give a lot to it. Of whatever, but we get, you know, quarterly or whatever, some newsletter that says, these are the things we're working on. In it, it says, these are the things, as big ticket items, that's on our wish list, like doing the HVAC system or something was this past year. And then, you know, my money probably doesn't even pay for a little tin panel on that, but I still am a member of Pickford. And there's just a, a pride of that. And I think we have a foundation that says, these are the big ticket, you know, the turf for the field, but then you're also cleats for football players. So it's, it'd be a, a part of that.
I do want to be perfectly clear, though, too, that stewardship of your donors and sponsors is key. And making sure that, you know, it's not, thank you for the check, it gets deposited, and then they never hear from you until you, the need is up again. So there needs to be those touch points throughout the year. There needs to be information that goes out, whether that's a newsletter or opportunities for donors to get together. And again, these are the types of events that a staff member does. That's their area of expertise, where you guys just get to show up and, you know, rub shoulders with the donors. That's a really, and, and that, that staff person, that resource development staff person says, hey, I want to introduce you to the, to the general manager of PSE Ferndale Generation Station. You know, and so it's, they make a connection that way. So then, you know, stewardship is key in this whole process too.
Other thoughts?
I, I really appreciate the structure that went into this draft. It really helps me think about it differently too, because I was a little bit of like, well, who are we going to get? So, I appreciate the thought process. I appreciate that you brought it to us, and that we didn't spin around and try to come up with something. So thank you for that. And I think with the building of the high school, that does give us a place to start this process. I've always often wondered about having a foundation for Ferndale. Bell and Ham's got one, Burdian's got one. We'll get there, yeah.
Well, and they, they may be a resource to talk to their people. How did they get it started? What mistakes did they make in starting it, you know, to avoid? What has worked and what hasn't?
And, you know, most foundations, well, all foundations have a board, but it really is up to you if you want to be, like, Ferndale Chamber had a foundation for many years, and the executive team of the Chamber was the board for the foundation. That is one structure. It's possible you may want to have other board members and just have one board member from the school board there. So there's different structures. My point is, is that there is a lot of opportunity. Don't let, don't feel like you have to do it all. And I will be more than happy to help connect people. I won't do it all. I don't think I could. But I will be happy to handhold this process for you and with you. Because that's, I make connections, and that's what I'm good at, and I'm happy to do.
Thank you. So just to kind of wrap up our conversation, what I've got jotted down is just, we need to get information on the foundation aspects of what's the district role if we have a foundation for our educational services? And we need to possibly get on the, we should get on the agenda for next month or the next month's bond oversight committee to discuss the specifics of like we could or should consider asking for. And then perhaps you and I could talk about the list of people that we should go visit to get their take on.
Yeah.
This.
And I'll do some recon on that too, because I think it would be helpful if we looked outside of Watcom County. Because it's possible, I mean, like, thinking about all the nonprofits that, there's a finite number of businesses. Those nonprofits, new nonprofits every day. So we don't want to be perceived as competing, even though we will most likely be competing for dollars. That should not stop us. It's so, getting input from places outside of Watcom County will be good. So I'm happy to do some recon on that too.
I know this is a huge foundation.
Pardon?
It's a hospital district has a huge foundation. I used to go to their breakfast on behalf of a really hospital. They raised six hundred thousand dollars in the morning. So, I mean, it's, it's a big foundation. So we can dream big.
We can.
And then certainly open it up. We can have two people from the board participating on this. I don't think we can have more than that at any one time, that with anyone that's interested in joining in on this, letting them know. All right. Well, again, thank you for helping. It's valuable for us to have you here.
Thank you.
For the rest.
Well, thank you.
She's going to go work on some connections. Thanks, Anya.
So the next item, nine point O two, is a standard report on our bond projects. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeBock for sharing the updates.
Yeah, so the, um, we do have the land disturbance permit that was issued. And earthwork is underway. So the, we're not quite to footings yet, but they are moving, they're moving quite a lot of, quite a lot of dirt around at the high school. The, in the process of, of moving around some of that dirt, they actually uncovered a buried slab that we had heard rumors, and there were, kind of some urban legend that when they rebuilt part of the high school, they just buried the old structure. And turns out that at least the foundation is, is, was left in place, the slab. So the crews uncovered that and very quickly stopped work when they found some old flooring that was actually still attached to the slab. Which, those of you that have done any remodeling or work on old buildings, you immediately have the hairs in the back of your neck standing up saying, oh my goodness, we got some asbestos problem. So they brought in the, the testing outfit, and they supervised the, the the clearing of, of the, of the slab and, and did some testing, rushed the results of it, and turns out we did not have asbestos in the, in the, in the flooring that's on the, on the slab. So that was really good news.
Good design choice for Ferndale High School of yours.
Yeah. So the other kind of fun thing that happened this week is the crew, while they were doing the excavation of the old field there, broke a very shallow fiber optic cable that provided the fiber to the CTE building. So they had been scrambling to get the CTE back up and running in terms of having computer access, and as of now, it's not in place yet, but they're hoping to have something soon. Cable was very shallow and not where it probably should have been. So anyway, that was a a minor hiccup. The roofing project, roofing repairs at Central are just about finished. They're, they're actually doing inspections down there to make sure everything is installed and up to warranty standards. And the, we are in the process of, we hired a, a company to help us develop the RFP for the Chester Brickwork. So hopefully that will be out. We're still optimistic that we can get that work done this summer, which will be huge, because then once we get the brickwork down there, then we can do the roof repairs. So those are, that's kind of one of the big, smaller projects that's still remaining on the, on the list. So things are moving, things are moving ahead, and it's kind of exciting to actually see a lot of work actually happening now. Not that there wasn't work before, but it's actually work that you can see as opposed to, you know, drawing or stacking drawings that we've got. So light poles are down, the grandstands are no longer. The, the appearance down there is dramatically different than it has been, and that's probably most of us have been seeing it. So any questions on or routes with the, the bond work?
Thank you, Mark. And you can find more information about our bond projects and the bond oversight committee on the district website. And the weekly updates that our claim publishes every Friday and last week's was number one oh eight.
It's also fun to watch the time lapse.
It is. All right. Next item, nine point O three, is a continued discussion about the development of the twenty twenty one, our twenty twenty one, twenty two budget. Specifically, Mark is going to share with us a more refined draft of the district's plan. It's ESSER dollars, and for those of you who extract of all our abbreviations, ESSER stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. ESSER funds are one-time dollars from the federal government. And this, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. DeBock to give us an update.
Thank you. So you've heard a few references to ESSER earlier this evening. One of the, the resolutions passed was directly related to receiving ESSER three, the school reopening plan. Was a requirement to receive the seven million dollars worth of ESSER free. So our one-time monies are actually, so far, three different pots of one-time money with different deadlines for spending. And as they keep getting bigger, so hopefully there's an ESSER four. But we have no indication that that would be the case. So the ESSER one was, we, when that first came out, it was expected to be a one-shot deal. We were allowed to use that for, to make up the loss. Um, we were allowed to use that for, to make up the lost revenue for the decreased enrollment. So, and that was our first plan. At that point, the state budget revenue forecast was still not very good. And we decided, you know what? That's a good use of those funds. We're gonna use it to offset the, the revenue loss for the lower enrollment. And we committed those funds to, to do just that. ESSR two then came out, um, and we've got, uh, spend that, we've got three million dollars in, in, uh, ESSR two. And that number has gone up a little bit. Um, as the state is kind of refined how that's being allocated, that was originally two point eight. So that ESSR three, um, just came out and, uh, the last budget session, the, the, uh, legislature authorized that. So we have got about ten million dollars to spend on one-time expenditures um, over the course of the next three years. So if you remember at our last, uh, meeting when we talked about budget, you all decided that yes, it makes sense that if you're gonna get one-time money, spend it on one-time capacity building items. Um, don't commit to ongoing expenses that we're gonna have to then cut when these monies run out at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-three. So our plan for, and I will, um, uh, let our colleagues jump in. Um, as we go through any of these, if you have questions about the specifics. So our plan for, um, ESSR is, um, for the expenditures. It's kind of broken into a couple of different pieces. Um, the first slide that you'll see um, is the, uh, professional develop, the, uh, uh, curriculum materials. So the English language arts adoption and the professional development that goes along with it. The math adoption, the K-12 math adoption that is in various stages of the different levels. Um, and these probably, the ELA, the elementary ELA will be this, this school year. Math may bump into the second year, um, just because of where it is in the stages. Um, and that may not be uniform K-12. It may be earlier and later, but it'll probably be a two-year process phased in. The teacher laptop, so basically all the certificated staff will get a new device because the current devices are either really old or they are underperforming. Um, they're, uh, we have a lot of problems with the hard drives are too small, the devices are old, they're not performing at a level that the staff that is now really dependent on them even more so than they ever have been. They're not up to that standard. They're not up to the, 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 the work. So we need to buy new, uh, computers. But there's a chip shortage in the world. I don't, we've all heard of that. It's affecting automobiles. It's affecting all kinds of, of technology. Um, so that we're hoping to do quickly all at once, but that may end up being phased over the, um, two or three years, just based on our ability to get the, um, get the devices. So, uh, speech language pathologist is a semester next year. Um, it's a, uh, basically it's a catch-up. We've got a retirement that is happening. Second semester of next year. Speech language pathologists are very hard to come by, so we are hiring a full-time replacement for the, uh, person that's retiring mid-year through next year. So we'll be able to provide additional services as kids come back into school. We can kind of do a little catch-up. And we've got somebody secured then in place for the full year. So it's a half a year worth of a point five. Um, that's an extra, just, uh, short term. And then while we're still in the, uh, COVID protocols and the COVID process, we're adding additional nursing staff. So we don't think that's a, an ongoing forever, but it's a response directly to the, uh, the COVID situation. And then our second, um, our second, uh, uh, kind of half phase, uh, piece of our plan is for the equity-based multi-tiered systems and supports. And I will let, I don't, is everybody good with what that is? Is everybody a hundred percent clear? Ninety percent clear?
Ninety.
Ninety? Do we want to have a quick run-through? Why don't you give us the, the elevator version of?
So multi-tiered systems of support. Um, it is basically where you're thinking about a triangle. And the base of the triangle is what we're providing for all students. So it's called universal support. So when you saw the reopening guide, so excuse me, the academic recovery plan, it talked about universal. All students get it. Um, and then what happens in, it's in our mind should be effective for a certain percent of our population. So if we're doing it effectively, it should reach eighty-five percent of our population. We'd like for more, but that's what our hope is. And then as we continue to move up through that, um, pyramid, it basically we're intensifying or providing additional supports. So the frequency, the duration, the intensity of our supports as we continue to move up through this pyramid. So the next is kind of the, a tier two. It's when we're providing some additional supports. Uh, when I say additional, in addition to the universal students are still getting that universal design or the universal supports and then a little bit more. And so once we implement that little bit more, it should add, um, should be able to catch another percentage of students. You know, another ten to fif- ten usually percent. And then there's still a group of students that may need some, some additional to that. So that's when you kind of that top level of tier with some additional supports that are intended to reach about five percent of our population. So once again, some additional. So that's what we're really working on through our organization is being very intentional. What are those universal supports that we're providing to all students? At that core level, that second tier of it, and then the top tier. So it's just being, um, consistent with the implementation and doing it as a district. It is a district so it's initiative. And the goal is equity, equal offer, I mean, providing equitable opportunities for all of our students. Um, and then, um, inclusivity as well. This is a district initiative that we're really excited about. At this point, you've had several teams at all of our buildings, leadership teams that have attended a city-based MTSS training. And we're really excited about that. And we're excited to be able to take it to the next level where now we're just implementing at more of a district level. So now we're taking it from our teams to our entire buildings. We've had pockets of this going on in different buildings, but we're taking it to the next level where it will be a consistent implementation, that consistent training with our leadership team. And so, hey, what do you have, Dan?
Um, it's designed to be very fluid and flexible. So, um, kids can go in and out of different tiers depending on the support they need at any given time. It's not like, comes out of like the old, um, RTI, the response extension. Allows that fluidity. So kids aren't stuck, uh, in tier two or stuck into a three that they can pop in now. And it mirrors both academic and social emotional learning. So it's not just one or the other. They can float, um, in order to meet whatever that kid needs.
The coordinators, what kind of qualifications do they have? Are they certificated or?
Certified teachers. We believe that being a position that some of our existing staff would access. So they may leave their classroom for a few years and move into this position with the idea, John shared this with our staff, that they'll have opportunities to move back into those positions because this is a temporary position with these ESSR funds.
But they would be teacher educated.
That we could fund that for two years.
Free now.
Yeah, they extended the ESSR three deadline. They gave us another year.
And the purpose behind that is that gives us, um, a really nice implementation timeline. Uh, where by the time we get to three years, it should be embedded. It should be kind of just part of the system rather than needing that front loading. So this allows us to front load, provide professional development, set up the systems, and then you can take that support out as the system becomes embedded within the school.
Here is the, um, data. I think I told you before from this MTSS project. So it talks about implementation research. It says, no implementation teams. You can expect fourteen percent of your project to be fully implemented in seventeen years. If you have an implementation team, you can get to eighty percent in three years.
Do they talk about sustaining?
What?
Do they talk about the data on the sustaining it when you take the implementation?
No, this was a, this was just something I took notes in a class that we're all attending where they were talking about the importance of having it. I could probably, I, I'm sure I could go to them and ask their source of their implementation. I've read, I've read implementation science, but no, I'm just taking notes. So, but that's one of, it's one of the things we, we're talking to our administrators about is they need to figure out how to use these people so that they are capacity building and not, uh, we said that conversation this morning, so that they're not something that we just rely on. Get the work done, but that they're teaching the people how to pitch.
That's also why there's a fair amount of PP developed, built into that as well, to make sure that happens. So you've kind of asked questions, concerns about the ESSR plan. You kind of hit on, I think, we went any additions before we move on? So that's our ESSR plan. And surprisingly enough, that's about ten million dollars worth. So the next question, and this slide may look, um, low YouTube. We talked about this before in our last, our last meeting, uh, that we talked about budget or study session. So our, um, you have a, uh, date coming up. To come up with the plan for, uh, the levy, um, that is on our horizon and, um, December sounds like a long time from now, but, um, time does go pretty fast. So we need to, um, start preparing to have a conversation so you all can, um, give us some direction on what you think we need to do for, um, for the levy. So, um, if we can identify, you know, what questions do you have? What information do you need? And how do you want to process it? Right? So how, we need to facilitate a discussion. Um, so you guys can get the information you need in order to find a direction. What information do you need me to provide you? What questions? What information? What, what do you need to know? And, and do you have a, a preferred method of, of, uh, idea of how you want to go about processing that information, having the, the conversation to reach a, uh, conclusion?
I guess one question I have is, I know when we were talking a little bit about the two fifty last year, there was some conversation of if, because of the limit per student, if we would be able to do the two fifty. And with enrollment down, and if that stays down and with more building and, and increase in value, is, are we gonna hit, is two fifty an, an option for us?
So if I'm, let me ask a clarified question. So because there's two different ways of going about it, you can either ask for the, the maximum of two dollars fifty cents or twenty-five hundred dollars per thousand, right? So two fifty per thousand, twenty-five hundred per pupil, whichever is less. Is that, you're asking what's the, is it, which one do we follow?
I mean, I'm wondering as far as, and I know it's all predictive, but if it, you know, if the, the number is gonna be such that, you know, we're gonna hit that limited two dollars, then it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to be asking for two fifty, you know? Um, and, and I know we can't know that exactly, but if we had kind of some sort of idea.
How close are we to that?
How close are we to that? Because, you know?
Yep, I understand.
I know it maxes out. If we ask for two fifty and we can't collect that, we can't, but that's still people's impression. You ask for the most. You know, and I, I think the, I guess the big challenge of going for that two fifty, you know, we know from our what we've done with planning that we probably need that much or more. But how does that look with the whole aspect of all this ESSR money that's coming out? What is the perception people are gonna have? And I don't know how to figure that one out.
Yeah, well, that's, you probably looked at, I know you looked at this month's financial statements. Right, we had to increase the graph size in order to accommodate. Um, in fact, in May, uh, we just found out the state is actually giving us um, another, they're giving us enrollment stabilization, uh, funding and transportation stabilization funding. That's another, uh, one point seven five million dollars.
So that seven hundred and sixty that we had put from S R one, did we not need that put there then?
It's already there.
That was for this?
Yeah. That money's already, that's the only, that's the money that's already spent.
Okay.
Yeah. What was the stabilization fund?
Their, their, uh, enrollment stabilization and transportation stabilization. It was to offset the, the loss of revenue due to decrease in enrollment. I, I know. How much was it? About one point seven five million dollars. That's above the ten that we've already talked about, correct? Yeah. Yeah. And that's not, that's not ESSR money. This is actually through state apportionment.
Yeah, because, I mean, part of it's gonna be perception. We're approaching a fund balance of nearly twenty million. Why are they asking for so much money? Don't they have enough?
I would think, I would think since the, the ESSR stuff from this one point seven five, it's a short term, just a two years. And getting back on to the same calendar as the other school districts, I don't think there's any reason we should do a four-year levy. I think a two-year levy is plenty. Of course, then they're gonna have to vote again in two years and all. I'll ask, like, didn't we just vote on this? But.
But it's so much fun.
Yeah.
So our election is, is November. There's no way for us to be on the general election?
No, it's February past.
I'm, I'm in February. Yeah. There's no way it can be on the election.
We have to lay everybody off, like we did last, uh, December. You did, you would have to lay people off.
No, we can't be on November of this year because.
Oh, no, no, it has to be.
That's what I was asking. Yeah, I knew it wasn't.
Yeah, yep. Unfortunately.
Did all the other, the other county, or all the counts, did other counties do four years?
Yeah, so if we, we do a four now, we'll always be off with them. We do a two now, we would get back on cycle, but I don't know what the right answer.
Yeah.
I mean, I think doing a two year so that we get back on cycle, that is, so we'll share the cost of the election in future years. I think it will be hopefully easier to convey to voters why we choose February. Because the money that you save, because if you get the answer in February, you don't have to lay everybody off and then rehire them or.
It's also because everybody else is doing it.
Everybody else is doing it. I think just one more time of doing a two-year and then get back on track for the, the four years.
Yeah, it's, yeah, well, it's easier if there's any more unified message. All the districts are and you know what people are asking for.
And it could you just give us some information on how our Burndale economy is doing relative to that too much science?
Um, no, I can. Not right now, but.
Yeah, and no, no, no.
Yeah.
Can you go back one slide?
I know what I'm minimalizing is what's a dollar fifty? What's two fifty in January? And I know we don't like to say what those things are paying for, but what are those categories of things?
Is it, would a dollar fifty keep us at status quo or will we have to cut more? Would a two dollar fifty keep us at status quo or will we have, or what could we bring back? What would the trajectory look like?
Well, I guess what is the, the ESSR money is for one-time type things that are in there? What? Like the, the math or the curriculum updates and that, that we have, you know, that's, that's needed to be done. That's been, I'm assuming, probably in the budget. You know, what are the things that, that that ESSR money is gonna help us deal with that maybe is because of the loss that we had from going to, from two. That that ESSR money is going to help us deal with that maybe is because of the loss that we had from going to, from 250 to 150. Are we, are there things that ESSR money is, is there going to be enough of it that it would, you know, potentially keep this. A good level at the 150 as opposed to the 250?
We got to use some of the ESSR for our English language adoption.
Right.
As opposed to using.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, yes. And just looking, I mean, and, and I guess the reason I do that is looking at, to try and make an argument when we spin this out to the public of saying, hey, we're. We are being responsible with this money, not that we weren't before, but trying to kind of see it from that perspective.
As painful as it will be to run a two-year levy and a two-year levy. I think in the long run, getting on cycle with the other districts. Make life a lot easier for the future.
That could be a really big part of the education campaign too. We will not do this to you forever. We'll not do this every two years. It'll be four years next time.
It used to be every two years.
Yeah, they.
Yeah, and they just, then they bumped it a few years back for four years.
Been about 20 now, but.
I guess we should never promise we won't do it too.
But it, but yes, it used.
I'm a newbie.
Yeah, you never make promises.
Somebody else has.
Maybe it hasn't been. Been a while, ever since I did.
Is all that funding not necessary? Is that, um, allocated already?
Well, that's what.
That's to go off of that.
Okay.
Plan. So it's, it's a plan still at this, that's our, that's our plan.
Okay. I was just wondering if there's funds in there available for the SDI curriculum.
Well, that wouldn't be one time.
Why not?
Because we want to go on.
It's already, it's already in our.
There is no curriculum to buy and I don't even, yeah, that's not, we don't want to do that with one-time money. Then what do we do when the one-time money runs out?
Correct.
So it needs to be in our.
But why not boost it? I mean, why not use it for funding? Help with that. Once we have it, we have it.
But what, what were we?
Resources.
Like what?
I don't know.
I don't either.
I mean, I don't know. It's all in the curriculum, but I think if it's a one-time thing, it would be.
To buy?
I don't know. I don't, no one's ever asked to buy and it's more training, training maybe, but. I think it's all, the curriculum's all there, isn't it?
It's online.
It's online.
That's the question.
But I never got the email from, uh, Pat Rogli about what was she asking to spend the money?
Her educators for classroom.
In every classroom, which would not be a one-time thing. You wouldn't want to hire a parent educator for every classroom and then let go of them two years later. My opinion.
We probably need to be sure there's a good explanation on our website. There may be. About what. Sure.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to see what they're.
Well, and I would be suspicious when we. When we get back to full-time, you know, assuming that we're going to be full-time in classroom, you know, back to more of a normal model. Next fall, there's probably going to be things we're going to find out that we didn't necessarily anticipate.
Most likely. What, I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, this.
Say that you.
I, I suspect we're going to find that there's needs and things that ask when we get kids back into, you know, the classrooms and. Remedial, for lack of a better word, or catching up or trying to help.
We have some staff in place.
Yeah, and there's some.
MTSS.
And also some, we have some other staff built into the ESSR funds that are just going to do some of that remediation stuff, but they're not going to just make smaller class sizes. That, yeah.
All right. So I will get answers together the best I can to your questions that you've identified. And, uh. Report goes back next meeting. And, uh, if you think of anything in the meantime, please shoot an email.
Thanks, Mark.
Do we have a study session?
No. Likely.
I said that.
We don't have one scheduled. Would you like Kelly and I working? When, when do we want to?
We've already proved.
By the end of.
We're, we're shooting for the end of June. The one, the, the, the state has, um, already told us that they're going to be a little bit late with the F-195. Because of all the programming changes that they have to make, so it may, the adoption may get bumped just because they don't have the, uh, F-195 ready. Um, but our plan is to have it, um, ready to go at, at the end of June. That's, that's one of the files, the state budget format, the official document that. Yep, it's in that state format.
It's, it's Mark's favorite.
So we know we're going to need a hearing before it stops. Did we do that on the same day? That are we going to need a study session? Before that?
But you tell me.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like we.
Usually do. It's my memory, but it's not just.
I would like, I don't want to look at, I don't want to have to look at the budget by myself. I'm seeing a bunch of questions to ask.
And we're trying to do it in.
I know.
So it's not like here's, you know, two hours on the budget. It's, you know, we talked last time, a little bit about revenue where we're at this time ESSR. You know, we're trying to get to levy. We're, so we're trying to make it a little more friendly and, and smaller pieces. Hopefully that's working.
So if you're putting the budgets to get like a proposed budget together, that would be approved by the end of June, do you have to? Kind of have more of a firm idea of what we're thinking, what we're, what we're going to ask? No, that's nevermind. That's the following.
No, because, and, and, and the reason. You've already given us the direction, right? Your, your OEs and your, um, results policies are driving the expenditure. So that's why we're working so hard this year to tie those directly together. So you've already told us what the work is, right?
I was thinking like how we talk about, is it 250, 150, all that sorts of things. That is going to be for next.
No, that's.
That's a next.
I'm getting all nine years.
Yeah, and the budget, we used to have to do that all, but we made a smart decision and we kind of pushed it off on Mark. How many years ago, whatever it was.
Wait, what's the thought on study sessions? This is kind of tied to the budget. It's not randomly out there, but it's tied to the budget and discussions around this. So, could you send out a Google?
Google poll?
Google poll.
Google.
That would be great.
We'll also, yeah. I'll save for sharing.
All right. Well, thank you, Mark. Lot, lot on your plate and ours as well. All right. So the next series of items represent regular opportunities for sharing by participants in our board meeting. So we'll start with our students' school board meetings.
Um, I have, I guess, three things to talk about. First is my thought exchange program process. Um, tomorrow will be an advertising day where an email that gets out to all. First, and they're going to be like advertising of this program and then on June 2nd, where the program running out for the rest of the years and it's going to be gotten. And also staffs about how to improve our school, school culture and environment. So, yeah, and then next year. Data to like make school better. And then another project that I'm working on with the leadership team is also. Hopefully, if things go back to normal, try to plan a fall festival to, uh, get students back to, you know, on their feet, to back to school, gain spirit. And, yeah. And then the other is, I went to the WASTA, uh, equity conference. Overall, I think it was really good. Um, I couldn't be there all day for both days because there was a lot. But I wrote down what I think the overall message was of the both days. The idea for, uh, the idea for how equity stands, all start with education. Student, kids and scholars require education and knowledge in order to grow their mindsets. We need or should have programs that advocate, um. Program application that gave knowledge, appreciation, appreciations and also conversation within equity. The most important, um, thing that we need is input from both sides of diversity groups, the, the, uh, the majority and also the minorities. Our voices, our voices within our school is very powerful with, um. With every opinion and saying there are reasons, feelings and also experiences, um, behind the reasons of why. If anything, we should encourage the reason of why equity is important and why. It is one of the ideals that really look how education system can grow and should thrive on. And then that kind of correlates me back to, um. My opportunity to be participating within the hiring teachers. I would, I wrote that, uh, I was lucky enough to be participating in the questionnaire for hiring, acquiring process teachers. I was able to ask in some questions about equity and student voices within that, uh. Process. Personally, I feel like there were. The equity question was good. However, some of the answers only, only correlate back to fair and equalness for how students. Should have materials and access to educations. I'm not really sure if there's anything else, but I feel like there should be. Something besides having stuff or learning. And, but then, um, after hearing about the, you know, the system of like the. Equity-based multi-tier system as support. I think that it's was, it is now a really good start. Of how we can answer the equity question within.
Well said. I wish you, uh, lots of luck with the, the thought exchange. And I'm really curious to hear what they have to say. And so when you can share that, I really, I just want to. What would those be?
It's a great project that you've been. Have been.
Okay, so. Um, I just want to let you guys that we know that we have elected new class officers and Kong is one of our presidents. So to let you guys know, congrats, Kong. Okay, so if you go to the high school now, if you guys remember the Red Hearts last year that we had plastered around the high school. This year, Morvick decided on circles to ask what motivates you. And so students were asked to answer what motivates them to kind of get them thinking throughout the day. What helps them, um, throughout the school year? Um, fun fact, next year, we have a mental health evil support group during evil time and students can sign up for that. On June 9th is the last day for seniors. And so hopefully I'll see you guys all at graduation, that physics field. I'm really glad we did. Yeah, I just wrote a little something. So thank you so much for the past two years and for the board and its opportunities and meetings so much. I came into this unsure of what a school board even was. So I sincerely thank you for allowing me to learn about the levy, bonds, mental health and so much more. This position has given me a lot of new skills and has helped me understand school systems so much more. I sincerely thank all of you for believing in me during my sophomore year because I didn't think I was going to get this position. I have learned things about each and every single one of you and have learned from all of you and highly respect and appreciate every single one of you. Uh, as of now, um. I will be continuing to participate in Frindal next year and I want to. Expand on my ideas, even though I won't be on the school board. Um, before COVID, I had thought of bringing therapy dogs to the high school during finals week and. Since I'm going to walk come, I will be working on that, um, on my own time with Morvick. And hopefully I will, um, continue to help in the basic club with Mrs. Dillon and bring the dinner next year. Um, so my work does not end as I want to keep on working with Frindal. And I'm still working on my Frindal carrots closet and I have found some items for the closet. I'm just finding, um, a spot at the high school. Which will host snacks and products for school, I mean, sorry, for students throughout the day. And I just really want to say thank you because this was monumental, not only for me, but for my Indian community. Um, so thank you so much for letting me be on the school.
Hey, who wants to follow up on that? School board members, Sharon.
I've got a bunch. So last week, um, was actually a busy school board weekend. The first one was the equity conference that, um, Tom mentioned. It was two half-days. I missed most of the first half-day because I had work commitments. But I did see at the end of that first day, a conversation about doing an equity policy that was. Mind-blowing. It was so well done. Um, the next day, it continued, um, one thing after another that just. Very worth it. A lot of talk about student voice. Were you able to watch any of that in day two?
I watched, I came in, I came in at the end, but I think some help are recording today, so.
Yes, so they have, they have recorded the whole thing and I have asked, um, because I believe only Kong and I attended. I have asked if it could be possible to purchase pieces of it so we could look at it as a board. And they are exploring that. So I will let you know. Um, I, I will say the equity, the, the equity. Policy piece was very powerful and I think as we're starting down that road, we need to watch it. Who did it? Her name is. That's what I've written down. Gloria Henderson. And I can't remember what school district she's from. Um, Mary Fertakas, who was a board member, school board member, years ago and now on the state board. She was commissioned by WASTA to. Do a history piece on racism and discrimination in the state of Washington. She presented, I missed that, so I'm really looking forward to.
She presented at the WASTA conference. I heard it there.
Yes, yes. Well, she's done, she's done the thing now. So I think it's in about its final stage. So. Um, I'm excited to go in and, and watch that.
So, so they are what they're thinking.
They didn't teach you. Remember the ones.
So you can purchase to watch them?
That's what they're, that's what they're talking, that's what they're exploring.
Tell them to really explore it really well because for like equity for school board members that can't come because it's during school hour or work hours.
Right, but they did tell us they were recording it. I, well, no, I take that back. I mean, I specifically asked if it was being recorded. Um, because I knew I was going to miss part of it. And at that point, they didn't know. So they did not decide about recording it until really close to the time that they did it. So. Yeah. So it's really worthwhile. I'm hoping they make that possible. Then on Friday was my state lost the board meeting. And, um, we talked about a whole pile of stuff, the things that. Probably, so two things that I actually sent to Linda and Kelly that hopefully will get attached to the, to the, um. Board docs at some point is one is talked about mask wearing and just reinforces what John told us last time that we have to wear masks. So.
See that, um, that has been retracted.
It's Friday? No, I hadn't.
Okay, on Friday, that was the thing that everybody was supposed to know about. Apologize for sending it out.
Pardon?
Kim apologized for sending it out.
Oh, no, I didn't see that yet.
Okay, um. Sorry.
So there's been like.
I get attached to it yet.
There's been like big upheaval, some, some school board. There's been like big upkeep, some, some school board meetings have been like shut down because of masks. So anyway. Clearly, if there's new news that I didn't know. The other thing, so Senate Bill 5044, which has to do with equity training and Wassa was charged with that. There's some information, I think that's still current and can be attached about what Wassa is doing in that process, getting ready to provide equity training for all of us as part of Senate Bill 5044. So that's in the works. General Assembly, which happens on September 24th and 25th, will actually be in person in Spokane at this moment. We talked about virtual and, and the board decided they wanted to. So it's in person in Spokane. And then annual conference is currently planning to be in person, the November 18th, 19th and 20th in Bellevue. If we are limited, so currently I think, and this has probably changed too since this conversation. But when this conversation is happening, you get a 400 people in, in a space. So if those of you that have been to the Bellevue space, there's a, there's a bottom area and there's a second floor area. And so they could run two cohorts, two 400 people cohorts. Now, we have a physician on our board that says, well, that 400 people doesn't count people that are fully vaccinated. So you could have 400 non-vaccinated and even more vaccinated. So it's, it's confusing and they're still working on it. They are saying they're going to have a Thursday breakout, Thursday early bird. On the 18th, then the 19th will sort of be like everybody having us the same experience through the day. And then. The 20th, which is a Saturday, would be the breakout session and it would end Saturday night. So they're not going to run it into Sunday this year.
What was the Sunday? When you were saying, I'm not Sunday, what was the Spokane thing? When you were saying Spokane, I was thinking that was the annual.
No, that one is the general assembly, which used to be called the legislative assembly. Which has now been combined, so it's the legislative. It's the legislative piece where we put forward.
Oh, what?
And priorities are. What are, and then decide on what our priority is going to be. And then they combined it with the, the, the business meeting for. Wassa, which used to happen during annual conference and it was there, it was like the person that got the short straw went to that because they were missing out on, yeah. So they were missing out on all sorts of other stuff. And so now they've combined it into one and it's called the general assembly. Last year would have been the first one that they did that combination. They did that as a virtual event, obviously. This year, this is going to happen in person. So it usually happens on Kevin's anniversary. So he.
The 24th. 1993. 2018.
So that's it. That's it for me.
Other board members.
I just, I just sent you the things.
Okay, I, I guess I do have one more. I did participate in the Science and Power of Hope today, which Linda had talked about. That was also fabulous. The guy's got a book out. I haven't read the book yet, but the workshop itself on hope and the idea that hope is. A thing, not just a feeling and that you can learn to hope. It was, it was very powerful. There were lots of steps to, to work through. What are your goals and how did you get there? And. I ended up in a small group room with Jeff Morgan and he and I worked on goals together. It was, it was a fascinating four hours that I was not expecting. I thought it would be good, but it was better than I thought. So.
I didn't go to any meetings or anything, but my eldest son was home for Mother's Day. He had gone back to university in January and he won't back, be back home until Thanksgiving. I got Mother's Day. But just lots of things going on in his life. And then my youngest son will be a senior next year in his life. And just thinking of. The things that they're doing now and how they're growing and how their wings are starting to really. Really stretch and. And how Ferndale School District, both of my boys went to Ferndale School District from kindergarten right on through. And just thank you to the school district. I had a lot to do with it, too, but you guys have had some things to do with it. So.
Well, I'll share about two of my things. Just, and again, it's a sort of, it does relate back to Ferndale, but my. Son, who has turned 25 on Friday, has, has during the pandemic, decided to go back to school, but he couldn't really work anymore. And so he's done very well on the program at Shoreline Community College and will be transitioning probably to SBU. For his degree in political science. And then my youngest daughter. Is 21, just got accepted into U-Dub Physics and Astral, Astral, Astronomy, I said astronomy, astronomy as a junior. So she's transferring. And she's the one that spent a year in England, but has done all these kind of crazy things, but left here with a great foundation.
And still reaching for the stars.
Still reaching for the stars. Yes, she, so we're very excited for those two. That's what I'm sharing.
I'll continue the trend. Pardon, pardon, I talked about a study session. But Robin and I go back to New Jersey next weekend because Daniel's white coat ceremony that was. Suspended because of COVID is going to happen. And so on Tuesday, we can be there for that.
Linda? Executing?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought I didn't. All right. Well, the final items on the agenda are consent agendas, the approval of consent agendas, and the superintendent's consent agenda. Consists of items delegated to the superintendent for action that requires the board's approval. The board's consent agenda, consent agenda consists of routine items for the board to address. The board has had an opportunity to review these, all these items prior to this meeting and is therefore able to expedite the process and approve both consent agendas with one motion. Folks said, at the beginning of the meeting, we didn't say that we were going to pull out the minutes from our study session, but those will not be part of our consent agenda tonight. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve both consent agendas. It's been moved that we can approve both the superintendent and the board's consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we've now reached the end of the agenda for the May 25th business meeting of the Ferndale School Board. Next meeting will be held on the last Tuesday of next month, which will be June 29th. If we decide to have a study session, that will be posted prior to so that people can be aware. Thank you all for participating tonight. I hereby declare that this meeting is adjourned.